Okay, welcome to our first live broadcast. We'll call it order of the July 14th Town Council Meeting on Cambridge City.
Jim McLean?
Present.
Mike Camish?
Here.
Derek Gilling?
Here.
Carrie Cole?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
How much do we have to speak up for?
Do they have to speak up?
Do we have to really speak up or does it pick up okay? I think it picks up okay.
It sounded like it, yep.
Fair language, I just heard. We weren't speaking up for that meeting, so I think we're okay. It's got the external mic on there, so. Alright, let's start with the opening prayer with Scott Moisner and the place to the flag.
Gracious God, heaven and earth, we give you thanks and praise for your solemn ring. Lord, I just pray your blessing be upon this meeting. Thank you for these men and women who've come together to be our local representatives, Father, and for those people you've called into service. I know that there are many churches that pray for them each and every week. You probably do that right now. I pray you'd come in, give them wisdom as they discuss the business as a hand. Lord bless them, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm going to go over the call.
Yep.
Does everybody, pardon, no, let's not do it again. Review the minutes from our last meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, I did.
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second to accept the minutes from our last meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed, and if you have a chance to, yeah. Claims?
Claims, yeah. Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second to accept the claims for this month. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then the financials.
I'll make that motion also, that we accept the financials.
I will stay consistent, second.
We have a motion of second to accept the financials for the month. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's passed. We have no public hearing this month. No guests. And so we'll go down and finish business. We'll start with progress report for all that want to go ahead and talk. Joe?
There, the Blue House on 40. They did put a new rope on there for the, uh, porches off. Got that better, he's still be back here.
They put a rope on as well?
They put a new rope on, took it down to the rafters, the new sheeting on. Paper tore the old off. Uh, did, they did board up doors, windows that needed it. And, uh, get this moved.
Right, the port top?
Yep, both porches are off. Looks a lot better, I don't know if they got the dumpster off of, out of 40 yet or not.
Yes, yeah, it's gone, yeah.
They must have contracted with somebody to do the yard, L C, it's been more than just once, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're actually staying on it now. The others, I've sent letters out again to other properties. Uh, some of these are not locally owned. They are with LLCs out of this area. In Greendale, Indiana, Flat Ohio, Texas. They are out, so I've got letters out to them. The house up on Westview, looks like he went around twice with Bushmore and that was it, so. What was that guy's name again?
Yeah.
Guy's number is getting, I'm gonna call him again.
Vanover.
Vanover, yeah, and see what is going on, because he's not addressing it, like he said, which. So, trying to set up with these other homeowners, kept them.
There are more problems with that house up there.
Up there absolutely is.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, absolutely. Uh, sending out letters, getting the retraction, once I, I did send them the second letter, they're taking more initiative on getting things done. So, work in progress, but I added like three or four. Actually, there's one minute. Five, six. They did go up on that 418 church. That guy lives in Ohio also. Several of these are gonna be, probably, I'm probably gonna have to go talk to them, not just send a letter. Especially on Maple Street, that one is pretty bad.
Joe, what about the two properties that we want to target so we can get the flight funds back? Because they'll have to be in progress.
The one on Parkway, uh, Bob is working on second letter. I'm getting our second letter for that one. Than what I have in here, on here, so once he is back.
Which one are you talking about, which one?
The one on Park, Park Drive.
Three of eleven, forty drive, yes.
We need to target another one.
I'll get that one.
We have.
I'm just gonna say that one up on Westview.
That's not.
Honestly, if he's not gonna do anything with it. He said he was, give him, um, give him time, he's had time to.
I think there's been sufficient time so you can move forward with that.
And we've seen in the past, sometimes that's what it takes to spur actions, so.
Yeah, I think we move forward.
To move forward, you need to have a declaration of an unsafe building and a council hearing to confirm that designation. That was a progress, just to be able to get that great one.
Yes.
Does he just come here and ask us to do that, Bob? Or does he need to formally, formalize that somehow?
No, his letter needs to formalize. I hereby, after he gives a warning letter, he then does a letter that says, I hereby, and I'm, I'm gonna get what they have to signify here for.
Okay.
The specifics of this, but it's a letter that I hereby declare it to be an unsafe building because of blah, 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 blah. And the remedy for that is blah, blah, blah. Most of the time, care of now, um, which is not that bad. And that because of that is the remedy, you have to have the hearing, and for a grant we have to anyway. And then if that hearing, whether they appear or not, council will confirm, amend, or reject, or likely to confirm Joe's recommendation that it is an unsafe building. Then that process is complete, and we turn that property over to, on the list.
Will we be at a point next month to, to declare those that way, or would it be a?
Yes, we ought to be able to have that letter brought. That would give us sufficient time when I get back to make sure that my, because that might ask me very specific about their stance, about their opportunity, about what they're supposed to do. And I think we'll have time to send that out before the meeting, so that meeting then would be at that point where a council takes its action.
Okay. I'm just concerned, I know Gary is too, about getting it done before the end of the year or something.
But we have to, you get the funds, right?
We won't have a problem.
Okay.
And, and once we have that letter, then that letter can be, like, repeated in the future with, with the specifics added, which will be the process up, I think, and help us, because there are more properties out there.
Absolutely. Okay. Anything else? Any questions there? Alright, what about the VFDs of Water Plant? I have an update for you on it. Did they call you today?
Uh, they called Chris today, they'll be here tomorrow at ten o'clock to check those out. That's what he told me.
Does everyone know what we're talking about here?
No.
Basically.
Who's coming, who's coming? That?
Uh, the, the manufacturer of those VFDs is coming to check. See what they can figure out what's going on at the town plant that keeps blowing these VFDs that were just put in.
Oh.
So, so we had voted to spend about eleven thousand dollars to put a fix in. The electrician recommended. And Wesler said, asked us to hold off because he'd like to get this gentleman in and make sure what they're recommending is actually gonna fix the problem.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
In the meantime, the problem just continues.
Well, there's, right now, we're just, it's, we're sitting on.
We're, we're okay right now?
We're hoping nothing else happens.
Yes, we're hoping nothing else happens. Because they're very expensive, and it's, and the, the company has been good as far as warranty work and getting us new ones that know, because we start still hard under warranty. But that's only going to go so far. Before they're like, wait, what's going on?
Yeah, how much longer is our warranty, do you know?
That I do not know very often.
Well, yeah, if it keeps failing, they're gonna start saying it's something we're doing, not their machine, not the machine, their money.
So, right now, we're basically operating without insurance, so.
Right. Look, they'll be here tomorrow at ten.
Good, okay.
They give us, hopefully tell us something, and if that fix is gonna work, that vote on last month for VFDs to be put in. So, I guess eleven or thirteen thousand, depending on, I don't remember what that number was.
Yeah. But I, what I foresee is if they say, yes, that's gonna fix it, we'll just move forward, because we've already.
We've already, yeah, right, so. Once he tells us tomorrow, Chris tomorrow, then we can.
Yeah.
Either, hopefully, go ahead and move forward and get it, that way we're not dealing with that anymore.
Alright. Okay. Update on the masonry work?
Uh, so, Joe and I spoke earlier this week, I have a contractor coming on Thursday or Friday. Not sure what time yet, it may be late Thursday. And then maybe Friday sometime during the day, I'll let you know, to review this building and the other building on Church, uh, or whatever, whatever that street is, is it Lincoln or Church? Lincoln turns into something, is it? Whatever, anyway, the other, the waterworks building. And, uh, he is a trained mason, used to work for Scott Bartle in Richmond. And he's done a lot of work for us, as well as Scott did. And he's trained in the materials and work that has to be done, now we just have to get a proposal on cost.
So, only that one for next month?
Yes, we have that. Unless, well, yeah, unless we want to have a, uh, you know, well, it's hard for us to judge what the cost to be. You know, so he can get started probably before the next meeting, but we can wait, it's not, he's got other work, so. I was just gonna ask for, you know, could spend up to five thousand dollars or something, but, um, but I really don't know what the total cost is gonna be. And I don't remember what the other rest of them is, forty bucks.
Pretty, pretty significant, yeah.
Yeah, right, they're very high. I'm hoping a small amount will fix this building, but the other ones are big, big projects.
Yeah, the, the water plant down there needs, definitely needs addressed down there.
Alright, we'll be back in a minute. Alright, update on the live streaming for meetings. The update is, we are live streaming for, for the meetings. Uh, we're actually, uh, on YouTube. Uh, there is a Town of Cambridge City YouTube channel. Uh, that link is out on the Town of Cambridge City website. Uh, so people can access it, go to our page, find the live stream, and follow along. And, uh, right now, uh, we're, we're simply using the camera from the laptop. I think, uh, probably long term, we'll wanna get some kind of camera to do it on the side. I've kinda looked into it, and the recommendations I've seen have been about a four or five hundred dollar camera to do that, so. I'll continue looking at it, in the meantime, I think this suffices, so. Okay, great, Joe.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you, I didn't have to say this much.
And, you know, if you wanna get, uh, any further into this, I say find a new tech person.
And Jim, you go to WC TV to be in that decision?
I did, yes.
And you did share?
Yes, I did. He was surprised.
I, I did, I did.
So, that, uh, yeah, I mean, it would be nice to use WC TV and, um.
He did say that if we decided that it wasn't gonna work out, that they would, they would come back to us, yeah.
And, you know, maybe, uh, if the money situation turns around, we can look at it again as well.
Yeah.
But right now, it's gonna end up being quite a cost savings to do ourselves, so. Okay. Update on the sale of property on South Walnut Street?
No report yet.
Okay.
Still working.
Alright, that'll be on for next month then.
Okay.
Uh, on to new business. We have a pay application, we're number one to Milestone, and that's, that's Community Crossing.
Yes. So, I'll need you to sign this, and then, um, the application, pay application number one is for two hundred and forty thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty one, no, wait, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty one and eight cents. So now, what we have to pay out of that, we only had two hundred and seven thousand dollars from Lloyd, and then we'll have to make up the difference from paying funds, um, for about thirty five thousand dollars. Which is not what it is every year.
Okay.
So, here I need you to sign, so.
We need a motion to.
Yep, I need a motion to approve the pay application.
Make a motion, we approve the pay application to Milestone.
Sir? Alright, we have a motion and a second to pay out the pay application to Milestone in an amount of two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars and eight cents. As, uh, pointed out from the funds that, from Sherry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need me to sign that?
Yes, I will just sign that.
Under here?
Yeah.
Alright. We need a motion to approve a thousand dollar donation to the fire department from Sugar Creek for the car show? I did?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go backwards. Approval to release funds from Oprah to Pride Mark construction in amount of one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and seventy nine thousand, eighty cents. This is for pay application number three.
Yes.
Uh, so this is basically, uh, this is all part of the funding for the, uh, performance venue, and actually, as it says, the funds would come from Oprah on the grant.
Yeah, I just, I just need a motion left, okay.
So, move it.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the release of funds from Oprah to Pride Mark in amount of one oh one, two seventy nine, eighty for pay application number three. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't know if you have to sign any of this. Cecil, this is from on Cecil Center, I don't think so, do you? I'm not seeing where you have to sign it.
I'll hit on some more information about the, uh, performance venue, uh, when we get the staff reports.
Okay.
Now, we can go to a motion to approve a thousand dollar donation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve a thousand dollar donation to the fire department from Sugar Creek for the car show. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, and thank you to Sugar Creek for that. And then, uh, the next item is a budget workshop that's, uh, we're proposing currently for July twenty ninth.
On Tuesday.
Can everybody make that?
Whatever time. It's usually pretty long, you guys wanna go five or six, or? Six?
I'd be okay with five.
I'd like five.
Bob, can you make five o'clock on the twenty ninth?
Yeah, I, I need to do one.
Richard and Jeff? Okay, twenty ninth, five o'clock.
Twenty ninth, five o'clock?
Yeah, good. On Tuesday.
Is that, uh, live streaming as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there any other?
Performance, the presentation works well, the public gathering, so you have to screen.
Gotcha. I guess other new business that we didn't put on here was about the planning commission that have a meeting. That'll be, uh.
Several meetings?
Basically, uh, there was a motion presented and passed to, uh, not recommend a planning, uh, and zoning study at this time. Due mainly to the, I think, the funding of the town right now, but, uh, basically, it's a delay, as I understand it, so. But that motion to get presented and passed at the last planning commission, that's basically the only, uh, business that was attended to at that point. Any questions about that? Okay. Any other new business we need to talk about?
Uh, I didn't know, I thought it was on the agenda, but we, oh, I will be getting a, uh, proposal from Duane Falls Sensor for the, as a second proposal for the, uh, park.
Yeah, so, that's, that, uh, regarding the security cameras, right? So, we have the one proposal, uh, from Tailored Systems, and, uh, we were getting the repo from Sensor, Jim is. And, uh, once we have both of those, uh, I will run that, uh, through to, uh, the Wayne County Foundation, and see if the funds that we're getting for the, from, from Lilly Gift Aid will be able to use to, to pay for that, so. Thanks, Jim. Uh, while we're on that, I can update everybody, as I said, a little on the performance venue. If you're going by, you can see that there's a lot of work being done there, a lot of concrete being poured. They, I think, today, they may have worked on, there's more work to do on the underside of the structure. Uh, they, they put insulation in, and there, there'll be another layer underneath that that will look, uh, like wood. So, it'll, it'll have a little different look than it has now. There's, there was, uh, something that came up last week regarding the side next to, uh, the street. What is that, is that Parkway Drive?
Parkway Drive.
So, originally, there was gonna be a pull-off there for, uh, food trucks or whatever. We kinda got some feedback anyway, that they, some people didn't like that, because it'd be in the way of people watching from across the way. Uh, as it ends up, the elevation map was off. And when they started laying all the sidewalks and everything, the sidewalk was gonna be below the street. Uh, so that's a problem. Uh, so basically, we're gonna, I think, what the answer is, we have to terminate that pull-off. I don't think that's a big thing, there'll be grass there now. They'll put a curb in and then some grass, and there will be another open area there that people can come across as well. So, uh, Jeff, we had discussions about, you know, you getting cars in there still from the car show. They can still get in from Green Street, and they're, they're, they're gonna leave an area there wide enough, you can still pull a car.
After this year, I think we're discussing is keeping everything on the other side.
Really?
Yeah, we're, that, a lot of guys like being upset to shade.
I'm sure.
And, uh, we kinda blacked out with the, they could set up.
Just an FYI, there will be shade up there, so they're gonna think it's a breeze.
Uh, yeah, I think we may just keep everything bordering the south street.
I think it was great having that Parkway closed too, during the fireworks and for your car show. Because then you have to worry about, you know, the kids running around, you didn't have to worry about somebody getting, so that might be something you guys think of every year.
Were all the cars gone the next?
No, one guy, one guy left his old truck sitting there, what?
Why, maybe he wanted to be in the car show?
He did, he did send fifteen bucks. I think we'll be discussed possibly having removed next year, though, if they're not gonna take them away.
Okay. Okay, I'm about, okay. Alright, we have a protection finish.
Finish date?
Finish date on it?
Uh, yeah, the finish date, it's, I'll just, just go in and open in and answer.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Uh, the contractor's saying, right now, August fifteenth. With the understanding, uh, they have, they're waiting on Duke, uh, on a quote to update the electrical three-phase in there, and Duke's dragging their feet, so. I got the number today, I'm gonna call them and see if I can lift their feet up, so. We can do without three-phase, but, uh, it's, it's kinda been wired with the three-phase, so bands can just come in, plug right into the panels and go, go forward, so. We'll see where that leads, I guess. But even at that, everything should be complete except that at that time.
Right, so it wouldn't push back the actual?
Yeah. Yeah.
The date, it would be usable.
Yeah. Now, uh, usable is another answer, right? Because, uh, they'll be putting sod down, uh, so you're obviously don't want a lot of people trampling over your sod for a while, so.
Yeah. When, when we discuss that at the main street meeting in a week, it's gonna be tight, right?
Uh, well, I've already, I've talked to Lloyd and, and Sarah, and I don't think we're gonna plan any kind of concert for this year.
Oh, so we're already gonna pull the plug on it?
Yeah, okay.
Nice, I didn't, Jeanie, Jeanie already did that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jeanie was involved, yeah. So. We'll have a big, uh, celebration next year to kick it off. Okay. Moving forward, uh, Town Marshal, Richard, do you have any help to, uh, anything for you? Fire chief?
The fireworks looked real well, successful as long, uh, car show they did, we had no problems. Everybody seemed real happy with those bits.
I, I heard rave reviews about the fireworks.
I did too, they were really good.
They were good.
It was very nice.
Great job.
Thank you.
Joe, Public Works?
Got ahold of Carolyn Chapel, she is the, our I M inspector. They did change our shirt, lowered it.
Oh, our water shortage case?
To DS, so that means Ken's license will cover that design.
So, when does that take place?
Um, I still wait here back where I called her to get, she left the message on the sheet, so I called her back waiting on, to talk to her, physically talk to her, and make sure that we are good.
As of, as of whatever date she said.
Right, and that was last, uh, noon, say, when she called.
Okay.
So, I called her back and left the message, so.
And that's who we actually sent that in to, right?
Yeah, I went to I M Water Division, that, that booster station was shut down, taken out of works to lower that down, so we don't have to pay anymore for that. But I just wanna get confirmation on that, so we're, I know we're good, that way, because we've got Michael to, you know, sign for now. But once I find out what you guys have, and the, uh, started working on up there, the Walnut and Shawnee, where buses hit the storm sewer, have it torn out, we're gonna have to pour a wall. That was, uh.
What just got fixed?
Oh.
No, 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 no. This is up at, right at the intersection.
It's where they paved though.
Yeah, it's where the milestone paved.
It's, yeah, it's near there.
Okay, that's, that's, that's.
It's near there.
It's at where school buses are making that turn. Whoever engineered that, I don't know why, but they did it for a reason. So, we gotta dug up, we had to dig up the old tree stump that was there, that was a lot of the issue, but they had cinder block down in there. That wall fell from the weight and the years of being in there, I'm, I'm assuming. So, my plan is to, we're gonna pour form and pour wall tomorrow, about eight foot long. Let that cure, we're gonna put a, uh, steel plate over it, concrete it, and then put asphalt on the top. We are going to have to do the other side of that, too, the west side of that intersection, too. Once we get, it's an old trough system, it looks like. There is for you to still pipe in there, but then there's a break, and it looks like a box trough. I'm guessing, basically an old catch basin, can't put it, so it'll fill up and then, and then move forward. So, that we're gonna have to address, but gonna start doing that tomorrow, until we got everything cleaned out and it's covered up. So, gonna use the back truck to actually get everything out of there, but we have to work on the back truck again. So, anyway, we'll get to that. I've got a copy of what the guys have, what they've done here, I don't know if you've seen it or not, got a chance to look at it. But, Joe, since December, doing the work here that we can do here, we've saved the town a considerable amount of money. Um, just so you guys have an idea, it's over twenty thousand, but, um, having the guys here, that doesn't count, since Chris has been here, he's done a lot of the work himself, too, and saved the town a lot of money, but, like I said, we all know, we've got an old fleet.
Yeah.
And it, we, we have to, and we're working on it, but we're sustaining it.
And when they're working on our vehicles, they're not doing the other things?
Exactly.
That need to be done, so that need to be remedied.
Yes.
Pretty quickly.
Very quickly. Um, so, we're, we're working that, uh, there is, got one bid from Cox to do the banks. One, we got, Dick Cox, he was, put one in. You guys, I, you guys have a bid up there, so that is for twice a year.
This is for, this is for once. Says each service.
Yeah, each service, yeah, they.
Total fifty, yeah?
Yes. Yes.
Total.
And that should do the banks down at the park and along the river.
Yes. That'd be once in July, I think that's what he put, and then get another wall before Canal Days, duck race.
Was it long, he was not gonna put in a bid group?
Yes. And from what I understand, he's got, uh, three guys, cause I called, I was concerned about, cause those banks are pretty steep over there. I didn't know what kind of equipment he was gonna be using, uh, but I guess he's got three guys, um, that was gonna use like commercial grade hedge trimmer thing, is what he told me, can do those banks, so.
How many times?
Yeah.
What would we spend ice cream? Money?
He only did it once, it was like forty, forty-six hundred, maybe?
Forty-three hundred?
He waited till the end of the season, right?
He just waited till September.
Till September, just before Canal Days, that way it was all down, and then they could do the duck race and all that.
It's not too far off.
No, it's not, it is not. That's something I got, I talked about when Cox came in here.
Do they have the proper liability?
He said he does, yes, I, I did not check it, but I...
I remember Lloyd telling me once he almost...
Oh, yes, it's that same down there, and it's, and the bees, I did tell them about that. Ground hives, there were three on the east side and one or two on this side, ground hives, and so, they are aware, very aware of that.
Are we aware of anybody else we could get a quote from?
Um, I had Cox did, I gave, or let Lino, and then Chris Gregdigger. I did let him know, he did not turn one in.
Land, Chris Land? Elson?
I remember his name.
Chris Elson or Chris Land?
Elson, Elson, yeah. He's got, those are dicks that graze at cemetery, but he did not put one in either, but his was an equipment issue. Kind of on second line.
That's same with Bonnie.
I know the town rented before, though, as well, I mean, we had rented a piece of equipment, or is that a kinda Bonnie's?
That, that silver board that Bonnie used is the town, that was modified to fit his machine.
What about the ditch on Ford, can we clean up?
You mean have five, five hours?
By trucks?
Nope.
No, we did not, Sherry asked me to do that.
They do, they have that.
Yeah, they, they even have that.
It does look a lot better.
It has.
It's got a garden.
And I, and those, yeah, and those guys were just swinging weed eaters, on that one. I don't know who they are, but...
So we don't wanna do anything for this tonight, or we don't wanna wait for another? Well, if we're gonna get it done in July, we have to do it now. It says once in July and once...
Yeah.
It'll be nice, we'll get it done.
I think, I think it's a good idea to do it twice, if we get someone in.
Yeah, I say we go ahead and approve this, I mean, we've done our due diligence and tried to get...
I asked...
Yeah, I tried to, yeah.
Yeah, it has to be done.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Cause it's really tall.
Alright, so I mean, temp was made to get some more quotes.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve this from Cox Lawn and Landscape Service for two services, twenty-nine hundred each.
Second.
Have a second?
Yeah.
Second, alright, sorry. Have a motion, second, to accept this quote from Cox Lawn for, uh, knowing the, uh, creek bit up twice this year, uh, as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On the same topic. Probably for the budget meeting, you probably need to do some maintenance on the swinging bridge.
That's where I was going, that's the start.
Go ahead.
Had to replace another board this morning, Sherry saw it last night, she was walking, but that bridge, there was a gentleman that, there are a lot of people that walk in, as far as you guys know that, in the morning, and those boards are getting old, and they are very slick in the morning, just from morning dew, um, I know we've replaced six or seven boards, handrails on there, so, I don't know who put that in, or when last time it had been, hasn't worked on, but it, we need to look into that before it becomes a really big, safety issue.
I wonder if we need to have, um, an engineer look at it or something first, before we put some money in to replace anything, make sure it's gonna be safe while we do, so. Yeah, I, I, I look, structurally, it looks good.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it's, it needs...
But there are some bolts, and there's some things in there, so maybe that's a good idea, Jim, I think, and also a recommended materials.
Yeah, and maybe some kind of a non-skied stuff, you know, it's terracotta slick. Yeah, it's very, something that's... A non-skied type service or something we could put down on there. Right, I think so many people use it.
I just had my deck in, and on the underneath and the sides, they put that, um, blacktop stuff. And I did have that on the top, cause I wanted the color, but, um, I do have it on the poles and the handrails, just paint it with that, the stuff you put on your driveway, that blacktop stuff. And it stays for a long time, and it's got a little bit of roughness to it, so it shouldn't be slick, if you just wanna coat all the boards, didn't take long to coat them at all.
Could we get a proposal or a cost estimate by budget meeting, so we can know?
I'd try.
Just rough. I don't, I don't know, the hell we need an engineer to pass that, that's a little too easy, that's... I haven't, if it's somebody that...
If, if we need to replace a board, though, we need to replace a board.
Oh, yeah, we're, yeah, when they were off, we could go get them.
Yeah, we wanna wait on an engineer to, to fix up.
No, it's just a budget for next year.
Yeah, I think we do, yeah, need to have a look at, make sure the walls aren't rusted through, I think current design was designed by Jim, so we can...
It was, yeah, that, yeah.
Okay, that's a good point.
Then I think, uh, things are going pretty good. Little behind us the cemetery, but...
Yeah, I was gonna talk about that.
Probably need for a time.
Your handling, right?
Yeah.
Tempting to, yes.
I will say that, uh, recently, I've taken a couple drives through cemeteries from local, uh, towns. Ours is by far the best.
Yes, I, I, and I will defend that, and I will hold on that sword too.
By far.
Amount of people that we have here to work, I think we're doing a pretty good job, especially with that cemetery, I know that is a high biz thing, and it should be, and taken care of, but I think, when you go around and you look at these other towns and their cemeteries, thing out, but there's a difference, so.
We, we also go, talk about the suite fence repairs, uh, maybe I need an estimate, also to go into the budget, probably.
Yeah, yeah, we spoke about that about a week or so ago, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah, and I, like I said, I had a guy, but never got returned.
Went to commercial?
Yes, never, I can try him again, I don't know if Banning does that down there in Virgin, if he would do it.
Costing, did he call you back? On Seabrow, remember?
He did not, he did not call you back, not yet.
We have a cemetery meeting, is it next?
Twenty-sixth, I wanna say.
Yeah, and, um, Amy says she's still in contact with somebody, she's supposed to have estimates.
That's on the rocks, right?
And the fence.
Amy has nine, okay.
Yeah, she did find somebody to do the rock.
She said, I was wondering about that. Yeah, that fence is, I, I wouldn't wanna tackle that fence at all. That's gonna be a, for a task, I think, I know that will be, so. I think that's all I got.
Nice point.
Yeah.
Uh, before we move on, uh, thanks to the, uh, live broadcast, I've been told that I'll be out of town the twenty-ninth. So, uh, I'm not sure if that date isn't over for the after, for the budget meeting. I don't know if we can do the day before or the day after. Who, who's in charge of that home council, my, uh, my private secretary? Yeah. I'm good. What day, ten, I mean, around that time, pretty much. I think President Jim probably won't be there, so.
Probably not.
Yeah, probably a good idea.
How about the thirtieth?
For the twenty-eighth?
I knew you'd want either.
Do you do twenty-eighth reduction of?
Yeah.
Twenty-eighth, probably better than the eighth.
Still five.
Can you do the twenty-eighth, uh?
Um, I'd say so, I'm, I'm double checking for five o'clock, I'd like to six, I don't know if I have something, pushing at five, but I say five right now, but I'll say, check the calendar, I'd be at six.
Okay.
Thank you, I apologize.
Eight, seven, five.
The good news is somebody's watching the telecast.
He watches, he kept on there today, does it say when he watches?
I don't understand.
Alright, um, let's go down the line, Mike, do you have anything?
Uh, no, not right now.
Debbie?
No. Again, the fireworks are great, but I think we're gonna have a lot of compliments, so, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, um, Ethan Moisner wants to hold a disc golf tournament on Saturday at Canal Days. Um, they're partnering, partnering with the Evening Kewanas. He said it's gonna be from youth to seniors, but they'll have staggering times, that not everybody's in the park at one time. From ten to four, he said, uh, they're gonna do, they'd like to do a nine-hole course instead of doing eighteen and more. I, I guess there's only nine holes, but then they would come back and go there and get their ticket.
Different places to start from.
He said, um, there'll be like small payouts to the winners, but then the rest of the proceeds would go to the Evening Kewanas. And I didn't know because...
Bring the people into town. Does that, I'm interested if anything else come on, I was wondering if there's a car show or anything that's gonna be...
That's on Sunday, yeah, so it should've.
Can you let us do that?
Ethan Moisner.
That's why I say everybody people in town.
I don't see anything wrong with it.
Don't have to use the fire station.
Put your signs up now, any goal in.
Yeah.
Um, probably should put a motion for...
Oh, they have their own insurance too.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we're letting check the term.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve a disc golf tournament in the, uh, park, the weekend of Canal Days, that's Saturday.
Saturday, when is that though?
Where that is?
The...
September sixth.
No?
Yes, it's the sixth.
It is the sixth?
Yes, because Labor Day's the first.
Okay, so it's the sixth and seventh?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Sherry?
I just wanted to say, after the last meeting, um, I ride around town a lot on my bikes, and I walk, and I see the town workers out and about, doing all kinds of things, and working very hard, and one day I visited down at the Mueller Building, and the witness, Ryan Webb and Ron Reynolds, working on the equipment, and I asked if they could put together some kind of a list of all the equipment that they've worked on since the first of the year, and the money that they've saved us, and it's over twenty thousand dollars, conversed as a shop rate with our aging fleet. So, um, I know other town workers, you know, repair things too, but I know these two individuals go above and beyond. Plus, there are other work that they do around town, and I just wanted to recognize that I had no idea how hard the town employees work out in the town and on our equipment to keep things moving along. So I just wanted to send out a note of appreciation to all that they do.
Thank you. Jim? Bob, you have anything for us?
I have nothing further.
Alright. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I like that.
Bye, Bob.
Bye, Bob. Good luck.
Vegas, or else. Bye, guys.
Bye.
See ya.
Alright. See ya.